The Knights of Columbus.
She'll be here.
She'll be here.
She has thirty seconds.
I've got a minute, Frank. Geez. Don't start early and nobody will make it.
Give her the money?
Oh, do I supposed to give you the money?
No.
You had to.
Do you have spares up there?
Good job.
Do you have samples?
Free samples? Oh, Marcy, did you put something? It's a good idea.
Yeah, we're on campus.
Just give us the key bending over.
Okay. Marcy, listen, hope everything works.
Oh, you'll make your nerves.
No, I think, yeah. Check it twice. Check it once, check it twice.
Good evening, folks. Good evening, folks. Welcome to this October fourteenth council meeting between the Community Development Commission and Buena Sanitation District. Marcy, is the videotape ready to go, all that? It's all ready to go? Okay. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members who are present, with the exception of Mayor Vance.
Thank you very much. Today, we'd like to have Cliff Kaiser from the Vista Chamber of Commerce with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Cliff Kaiser.
I'm here.
Well, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start it. Thank you. Stand, please.
And we can do a moment of silence.
What we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You were very silent. Ms. Gilder, is there any deletions or additions to the agenda?
No. Mayor Tim Lopez, there are no additions or deletions.
Okay. Thank you. In closed session today, we had only one item. Mr. Piper, could you please report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council did meet in closed session on the real estate items listed on today's agenda. Instructions were given to staff, but no action was taken that's required to be disclosed.
Thank you very much. We're going to do the presentations now. Okay. Cliff, are you here?
Yes.
Would you like to do the invocation, please? Thank you. Let's just stand, please.
O glorious and gracious God, we adore you and humbly recall our shortcomings, our weaknesses, my tardiness. We recognize we have not always lived up to our calling and ask your forgiveness and We do well always and everywhere to give you thanks, and this we give you now. Thank you for today, the food we have eaten, the air we have breathed, the friendships we have shared. Thank you for bringing us here together now. Let us never lose sight of the less fortunate ones among us and always reach out as a person and as a community to raise them up. Please watch over those threatened by fires and protect our firefighters. Strengthen and guide this council to hear your call and do your will. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Next is presentations. We're going to have the entire council go down to meet David Brookbank, Jeanette Ferris, and Kathy Brendel. Would you please, the three of you, come on up over to this corner? David first.
We want to honor him for twenty-five years of service and have all the council shake
community, and we really appreciate being here for thirty years. Thank you for your service. Thank you. But we have a little gift for you.
Thank you.
We have a little gift.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanette. Congratulations.
Fantastic. Now we have Kathy Brendel. Also, for thirty years in the City of Vista with Parks and Rec.
his hand and thank him very much for being there, but to stay up and have his picture
I'm telling you, this lady has done a great job for our community, and we're proud of
taken with the council.
her, and I hate seeing her leave because there's still a lot of work to be done here
Thank you, David, for your service, your service here in the community. Twenty-five years.
Here, David, right here.
in Vista, especially with our sports park here in Vista, and we're going to miss you.
One more time, one more.
I think it should last.
There you go.
Having a hard day today.
Next is Jeanette, please. But we also have a gift for you, too. Okay. Oh, excuse me.
I have to tell a story on Jeanette first. First, I came here as your Economic Development Director in nineteen eighty-nine, and Ms. Ferris was in charge of all the staff report reviews. She's one tough lady, I'll tell you. And if I was an hour late, I got chewed out for it appropriately. So, I learned a lot from you, Jeanette. Thanks for all your good service. Kathy Brendel, hello. One of my favorite people. Whereas Kathy Brendel began her employment for the City of Vista on May thirty-first, nineteen seventy-eight, you're like fourteen, is that right? I think so. As a recreation supervisor, then promoted to a recreation superintendent, and then she was promoted to Assistant Director of Parks and Community Services on July first, nineteen eighty-nine. After serving fifteen years as Assistant Director, on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and five, Kathy was promoted to Director of Parks and Community Services. And you had a good mentor, didn't you? Jim Porter. Okay. Whereas Department Director Kathy oversaw the city's cultural arts program, including the Moonlight Amphitheater and the Abo Playhouse, the Wave Water Park, Senior Services Division, the Senior Nutrition Program, Recreation Divisions, the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe, and until recently, the Parks Maintenance and Facility Maintenance Divisions. Now, this is a job you can do easily in eighty hours a week. Sometimes you did it in less. Not very often. Whereas Kathy has been an integral part of the development of many of the department's programs, such as the award-winning Out and About Senior Transportation Program, which is really valued in the community, now starting its tenth year, the creation of the Public Arts Commission, and many other successful programs. And whereas Kathy originated the programs at Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe when it was first purchased by the city, remember when that was? That was a challenge, wasn't it? She's been instrumental in creating its nonprofit board, the Volunteer Docents Program, and education program, which has reached thousands of schoolchildren, bused in from schools all over North County. I think last year you had over seven thousand, didn't you? Very important program. Whereas Kathy has shown her commitment to the community by volunteering with such organizations as the Vista Boys and Girls Club, where I think you're director, correct? Yeah? The Moonlight Cultural Foundation, the Moonlight Angels Accumbent, and the Friends of the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe. And whereas Kathy represented the city throughout the county as well as the state through her participation in such professional organizations as the California Parks and Recreation Society and as Chair President for the California Foundation for Parks and Recreation Scholarship Fund Committee, that's a long one, in two thousand and four. And through this representation, she was presented with a CPRS Presidential Award in two thousand and two, which is, when you consider there's four hundred and ninety-some cities in the state of California, she got the top award and deservedly so. Okay. Whereas Kathy will be greatly missed, but her legacy remains in the many community service programs she helped create and the facilities she helped build, or will be completed soon after her retirement, such as the Moonlight Stage House, the City Sports Park, the Tennis Court Complex of Brangle Terrace, and the demolition of the skateboard park. I added that in. Whereas Kathy is respected and admired by both coworkers and residents, she has given above and beyond what is expected to her job and to the community and will be greatly missed but not forgotten. And whereas the Vista City Council and the City of Vista offer their sincere appreciation for Kathy's tremendous dedication and commitment to the City of Vista, we commend and thank her for more than thirty years of invaluable service to the City of Vista and wish her well in her retirement. Now, therefore, the Mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, October sixteenth, you have to wait two days, sorry, as Kathy Brendel Day in the City of Vista. Let's give her a big hand. And would you do me a favor and introduce your family?
Thank you very much. I do have special people here tonight, my in-laws Walt and Pat Brendel, and my son Derek, and my husband Steve, and they're all my behind-the-scenes support, and I love them very much and I'm glad they're here. Thank you.
This is clearly one of those jobs you can't do without a great family and great husband. Good job. Thank you.
Is this on? Is this on? Okay, it's on. Okay, I have one more thing for Kathy, and I'm going to read the inscription on the back. This is a pewter plate that says "America's Climatic Wonderland," which Vista is, and we just give this to very special people. And so I want to read this. There's an inscription on the back. It says, "Kathy Brendel, Director of Parks and Community Services nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and eight, with sincere appreciation for more than thirty years of dedication and commitment to the City of Vista. We commend and thank you for your years of invaluable service to the City of Vista and wish you well in your retirement and future endeavors." Thank you. And here's the plaque for you, the pewter plate. Thank you so much.
I can't believe she's retiring. She's so young still. But knowing Kathy, I'm wondering what she's going to do with her retirement. I don't see her staying home, do you? Just kind of relaxing at home? No. Judy, she needs the box, too. Oh, here, Kathy, here's the box for you. We're doing Knights of Columbus here. Okay, the next thing I have here is for Ms. Roger Rowe and Bart Balfamio here. We're going to do the Knights of Columbus, a proclamation for the Knights of Columbus. It's Tootsie Roll Week coming up, so everybody get your dollars out here. So, I will read for you, I'm going to read the proclamation here. It's, whereas the Knights of Columbus, let me get my glasses in so I can read real well here, says, "Whereas the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive is October seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, two thousand and eight, and whereas over five hundred and fifty councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for developmentally disabled children and adults in California in this twenty-first annual drive. Whereas all money collected locally will be donated to organizations such as the Vista Special Olympics and Downstown, and whereas developmentally disabled citizens, especially in financial times like these, need the support of the public so that they can develop and be productive, contributing members of society. And whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. Now, therefore, the Mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, you get three days, two thousand and eight, as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the City of Vista, and we urge all of our citizens to support this important fundraising activity and to help developmentally disabled children and adults in Vista and all throughout California." So, thank you so much, and we have our dollars here for the Tootsie Rolls. Here's a dollar. So, everybody, thank you so much. Would you like to say something? Does anybody want to? No, they got some down here.
The Knights of Columbus here in Vista, and there's sixty-one councils in San Diego County. Our council has led every year since its inception, and the most we ever collected was a little over ten thousand, twice, but we're shooting for about fifteen this year, hopefully. And the state is trying to get a million dollars because there are five hundred and five councils throughout the state of California. We normally come in around fifth or sixth, but there are them guys up in Orange County that all them big corporations assist to them, and we can never touch them. But we'll be here on the supermarkets passing out Tootsie Rolls, hoping that you will contribute money, but if you don't, that's okay. You still get a Tootsie Roll. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's folks out there. Go ahead. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. It's a big night tonight. This is a special night tonight, too, though. What I'm doing is going to honor some special Vistans, and this is called the Vista City Council Meeting Good Citizen Award. Tonight, we're honoring several City of Vista employees who by their selfish actions and quick responses saved the lives of two individuals during separate medical emergencies. On behalf of the City Council, I'm recognizing all these individuals for the Vista's Good Citizen Award. First one I want to have is Chris Hensley, if you want to come on up. It says, "First Good Citizen Award is being bestowed on Vista firefighter Chris Hensley. In September, while off duty, Mr. Hensley was surfing in Carlsbad area and noticed that a nearby surfer was floating on the water. The surfer was unresponsive and making no attempts to swim. Reacting immediately, Chris applied a rescue swimmer's hold onto the unconscious surfer, pulled him out of the ocean, and began administering CPR. According to Carlsbad Fire Department's reports, Chris performed CPR for a full two minutes before medical services arrived on the scene to supplement care. Captain Clark with the Carlsbad Fire reported that the distressed man was breathing and semi-conscious by the time the paramedics took care. He said Chris's swift actions and resuscitation efforts saved the life of the surfer. Chris, we applaud you for demonstrating courage and quick thinking and for using your advanced level of skills and knowledge to execute a safe and effective rescue." Thank you, Chris.
His mom and dad were great friends of mine, and I remember when this young man was smaller than me. Now he's bigger than me. So, thank you very much for what you did. Thank you.
The next two people. It says here, "The next two Good Citizens Award is being presented collectively to the employees of the Moonlight Amphitheater. Moonlight Manager Kathy Brombacher and Dan Kayes are accepting this recognition on behalf of the employees. These individuals demonstrated outstanding judgment by taking the initiative to provide first aid and call for help when a man collapsed during the performance at the Moonlight Amphitheater. Additionally, the staff calmed the audience and cleared the aisles for emergency services to expedite the response time. Beyond a doubt, the collective clear thinking and quick actions of these individuals responding together played a significant part in recovery of this man. I therefore, we applaud all of you tonight for the quiet heroes that you are to our community. Each of you illustrated selfish acts towards your fellow citizens."
Can I please bring up Jerry Plato, Terry Breen, Keith Gemmo, Lisa Theodore, Lauren Theodore, Kendall Behringer, Logan Wiedenhoffer, and our first responder, who was there and applied the defibrillator and was there until the end through the whole thing, Aaron Gibbs.
It's such a great teamwork, and thank you for your response. Thank you, everyone.
This next one is a proclamation for Fire Safety Month in the City of Vista, and Gary Fisher, our fire chief, is going to come and accept that. But can we have all the firemen come up here? I think you guys are all lined up back there. Come on up here and get you on camera.
Chris, come on.
You're all against the back wall. We need to have you be seen here.
Everybody, I'll get up here, yeah. I'll stand back up here. No one's figured out, so I'll read the proclamation here. Okay. And now, we're going to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas, statistics show that firefighters responded to nearly four hundred thousand home structure fires in two thousand and seven, and eighty-four percent of all fire deaths occur in a home. Whereas heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of non-fire personnel fire deaths in the United States. And whereas older adults and children under five years of age face the highest risk of home fire deaths. And whereas the two thousand and eight Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Home Fires, underscores the need for everyone to perform a home fire prevention inspection, test their smoke detectors, and develop and practice a home fire escape plan. And whereas the members of the fire service are joined by other concerned citizens of Vista as well as other emergency services providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their safety efforts, now therefore, the Mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand and eight, the whole month, as Fire Safety Month in the City of Vista." So, thank you so much to all of you for all of your service and all that you do, and I think the fire chief would probably like to say a few words.
Well, I would just like to pass along and echo the comments from the council that please have a home escape plan in place, have a meeting place outside your house, and look around your house and make sure you don't have any major safety issues, and make sure your detectors are working, and if you have any questions, please give us a call. We're always happy to come out and help do a little survey and take a look and give you some advice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You guys are heroes. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is oral communication, and we have a couple of speakers here, and in order to speak, you have to fill out a speaker slip out there, and you have a total of three minutes to speak on anything besides what's on the agenda. And you have three minutes. And the first person to come up will be Jeff Hertz. Following him will be David Shehan, and after that...
This next one is a proclamation for Fire Safety Month in the City of Vista. And Gary Fisher, our Fire Chief, is going to come and accept that. But can we have all the firemen come up here? I think you guys are all lined up back there. Come on up here and get you on camera.
Chris, come on.
You're all against the back wall. We need to have you be seen here. I'll get up here, yeah. I'll stand back up here. No one's figured out, so I'll read the proclamation here. And now, we're going to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas, statistics show that firefighters responded to nearly 400,000 home fire structures, home structure fires in 2007, and 84% of all fire deaths occur in a home. Whereas, heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of non-fire personnel fire deaths in the United States. And whereas, older adults and children under five years of age face the highest risk of home fire deaths. And whereas, the 2008 Fire Prevention Week theme 'Prevent Home Fires' underscores the need for everyone to perform a home fire prevention inspection, test their smoke detectors, and develop and practice a home fire escape plan. And whereas, the members of the fire service are joined by other concerned citizens of Vista as well as other emergency services providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their safety efforts. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October 2008, the whole month, as Fire Safety Month in the City of Vista." So, thank you so much to all of you for all of your service and all that you do. And I think the Fire Chief would probably like to say a few words.
Well, I would just like to pass along and echo the comments from the council that please have a home escape plan in place, have a meeting place outside your house, and look around your house and make sure you don't have any major safety issues and make sure your detectors are working. And if you have any questions, please give us a call. We're always happy to come out and help do a little survey and take a look and give you some advice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You guys are heroes. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is oral communication. And we have a couple of speakers here. And in order to speak, you have to fill out a speaker slip out there. And you have a total of three minutes to speak on anything besides what's on the agenda. And you have three minutes. And the first person to come up will be Jeff Hertz. Following him will be David Sheahan. And after that, Chuck Rabel. Is Jeff here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I hope that the roads are not on the agenda for this evening. That's my major concern. I'm a truck driver in Vista, been driving truck around Vista for about eight years. I own a small business in Vista as well. And I've just noticed a slow progression of the deterioration of the roads in Vista, to the point now where it's becoming quite significant. And I just, I'm wondering what the city plans to do about that? And when are we going to get the ball rolling? Because it seems like it's kind of taken a long time. I know on Melrose, they've marked out all the, where they're going to do the repairs. Now the paint, where they've marked where they're going to do the repairs is fading away. So, I'd like to get the city council's opinion on that and what they plan on doing. One more.
There isn't any ability to take any action on any items, however, information can be provided. And information is, originally, the council, if we had certain grant monies coming from the state and additional monies from the city, we were going to allocate $9 million over two years. With the cutbacks at the state level, we're able to allocate still $6 million over the two years, which is several million more than what we've done because we are behind. There are a number of the funds that we used to receive have not been coming forth, state and federal funds, to fix our roads. So, we're trying to put more general fund dollars towards them. So, we're looking at specifically, Melrose will be looked at, either overlay or complete reconstruction in certain areas, or slurry seal in just a couple of areas from top to bottom. And that's the major project for this next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
This may...
Please state your name, please.
David Sheahan, Corona del Vista Mobile Home Park. This may sound a little strange this evening, but our community would like to thank the City of Vista.
Thank you.
We've had our mobile home park, over 200 residents, mostly elderly. We've had some very serious traffic concerns on North Anza. And over the last couple of months, we've interfaced with maybe four or five different departments. I'm not going to name by name over a dozen of the employees of the various departments. We asked for vehicle monitoring, vehicle speed, additional curb signs, double striping, reflector plates, and other things. And we were not denied a single request. The employees are outstanding. I know you already know this, but we would like to repeat that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chuck Rabel?
Chuck Rabel here, 821 Crescent Drive. Two items tonight, one, second time I brought this up, and it seems appropriate now that the fire team was here along with the chief, is the gross negligence, it's the only term I can think of, on South Melrose and the area surrounding the new fire station. Yes, I'm sure Fish and Game and other bureaucrats have got something to say about it, and our bureaucrats have something to say about it. Talking, especially now in the fire season, it's time to do something, time to get that fire break in there. And I'm at a loss as to why it's gone on as long as it has. Item two is real quick. Your contractor here from San Diego's got a trailer in the lot over here. And for some reason, they've got two lights, big signs, that every night are turned on. And I'm not sure what he's advertising, but we shouldn't be paying electricity for his advertisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the consent calendar. And it looks like we have one item pulled so far, C-23. And C-19. From the public, so, council.
Let me move for adoption of the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, can I have a motion?
No, second.
Okay, there's a second. Please cast your vote. Passes with Mayor Vance absent. Thank you.
We'll start off with C-23. Oh, excuse me, C-19. And we have, Chuck Rabel would like to speak.
Mayor Lopez and council, would you like to have a report from staff first?
Yes.
Or would you like to just go to the speaker?
Let's go to the speaker.
And then see if there are any questions. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rabel, please.
These are tough times we live. Chuck Rabel again, 821 Crescent. This item is to increase the amount of money that the city will subsidize rehabilitation of trailers and housing. And it will increase the current max loan limit of $25,000 for trailers to $40,000. Now, the last time I looked, trailers aren't real property. They're personal property. I could be wrong, but that's what I recall. And $40,000 is a huge number to rehab a trailer. I recently entered the market, if you will, for manufactured housing, contemplating putting a granny flat on a parcel that I own. And number out of the factory is, give or take, for 800 square feet, slightly over $40,000. So, if you can replace, if you can buy a manufactured home for $40,000, I can't imagine why one would spend $40,000 for a trailer that's personal property. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mr. Rawlins, could you speak on that?
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. We have a very short presentation on this. Ms. Graham will address the item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and members of the city council. Tonight, you are being asked to adopt a resolution that amends the housing rehabilitation loan program by increasing the loan amount to $40,000 for mobile homes and $75,000 for single-family dwellings. The housing rehabilitation loan program provides loans to low-income property owners to assist them in addressing unsafe living conditions, to correct health and safety issues, and to preserve the integrity of their home. It is not intended to address purely cosmetic issues. Since inception, 181 rehab loans have been made to Vista residents. 181 rehab loans have been made to Vista residents. 86% of those loans were made to mobile home owners. In the past three fiscal years, 32 loans have been funded at an average of 11 per year. 94% of those loans were made to mobile home owners. Many of the loans were made to assist elderly households residing in mobile homes with income below 50% of area median income. The program offers both technical and financial assistance for making repairs to their homes. Financial assistance is offered in the form of silent second loans that do not require monthly payments, but are repaid at the time of resale, transfer of title, refinancing with cash out, or non-occupancy of the home. Technical assistance is offered in several ways, including the determination and prioritization of rehabilitation needs. The proposed increase in maximum loan amounts is necessary to address increases in construction labor costs and material costs, which have steadily increased over time, but have increased significantly in just the past few years. While the housing market has recently witnessed a drop in sales prices, the same cannot be said for construction and material costs. In fiscal years 08, 09, approximately $265,000 in home and redevelopment set-aside funds was allocated to the rehab program. This amount can be changed during the annual budgeting process. In addition, the program received a 2007 Cal Home Grant in the amount of $300,000 and a 2009 Cal Home Grant in the amount of $450,000. Cal Home Grant funds must be expended within three years of an executed agreement. With this level of funding, staff anticipates we can make more than twice as many loans over the next three years as compared to the previous three years. Staff will continue to aggressively pursue additional grant funding opportunities to augment the program. This concludes staff presentation. Mr. Rawlins and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Rawlins and Mrs. Graham, could you address Mr. Rabel's question?
Yes, the, part of the goals of the program is to try to keep affordable housing units in place with minimal disruption. And while it may be possible at some price to buy new units, part of the program here is to address existing conditions that are health and safety caused. And simply buying a new unit and replacing it would be very expensive. It'd be, the cost would be beyond just the cost of the unit. So, when we look at developing affordable housing, the cost for units can be upwards of over $100,000. And I'm talking about affordable housing in general, not just for mobile homes. And so, we see the expenditure of as much as, it's a maximum of $40,000, as a very economical way to maintain both affordability in the city, affordable units, and to help folks who are on the lower income side.
Ms. Ritter.
To answer some of the things, I was going to say the same thing, but I was also going to say that most of them, there are some trailers in mobile home parks, but there, I know of two parks in Vista that they're actually on the property tax rolls, that they're single-family homes, they're manufactured homes, or they're called, you know, mobile homes, and they are on the tax rolls. And so, they're worth putting money into to fix. They own the property underneath. So, at some point, maybe they would put a new one on there. But to fix theirs up is not a problem. And I've seen many of them that are fixed up and are doing real well. So, there are some maybe that have trailers. I don't know about those, but the ones that I've seen are pretty nice, actually.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Ms. Brackey.
Thank you. Several questions. First of all, these grants are meant to be for low-income individuals, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and that's the only people we grant them out to, is people fall into that category of being below a certain percentile?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so, and the grants have to use up and within three years' time? So, we have to be pretty aggressive in our approach to try to make sure that we use that money properly?
Yes.
Okay. And do the grants allow for mobile home parks, mobile home units?
The grants do allow for use with mobile home units, recognizing that oftentimes mobile home units are very affordable as compared to single-family or condo units.
And basically, use it for rehab rather than cosmetic reasons?
Correct. What we're trying to do is keep affordable units that are already affordable units in the city. We want to keep those in good state of repair from a health and safety perspective. And we're really trying to target folks who otherwise would not be able to make the improvements that are needed.
And now that we've taken it up to $75,000 for a household, that seems like a significant amount of money that it might be utilized now. At $50,000, it might not have been utilized. So, we'll still pursue single-family dwellings, too, then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Can you speak to, I have a memo here that talks about the Housing and Redevelopment Department getting additional funding. It seems you got $900,000 from the state of California?
As Ms. Graham mentioned, we have been funding this project along over the years in the $250,000 to $265,000 a year range, which has allowed us a very limited reach. And so, over the last year and a half, we've aggressively pursued additional funding sources so that we can really have an impact in the community. And fortunately, we've been successful and we've attained additional funding sources. This year, we've gone from, this is proposing that we would go from about $265,000 to over a million dollars, which will allow us to significantly increase the number of folks that we assist in this way. So, we're very pleased about that.
Well, I know this council's been talking about it for years, assisting those in need, particularly for low-income housing, because it's, affordable housing is so difficult. I know that the, and in these economic times, probably more difficult for some to get loans. So, this is a good opportunity for many people.
One of the things that I would say is a general statement is it's much easier to maintain affordable units that you have in the city than to create new ones. There's a lot of reasons for that. But we certainly want to maintain the affordable housing units that we have in the city in as good a repair as we can. It's a much more efficient use of funding.
Thank you for everything you've done. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Ms. Graham, the loans that you've made in the prior period, let's say the last year, have they been mostly at the high end, or have they been somewhere below that for the most part? Or, you're asking us to go to $40,000. So, have you, in fact, been hitting the ceiling frequently on the 25?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
And so, in essence, then, some people may have applied for more or would have, could have used more to adequately repair their home?
Yes, we could have used more. We actually had to walk away from a couple because we didn't have the funds available.
I would just add that unfortunately, that creates a situation where somebody who has the greater need, we're not allowed to help because they would exceed the total dollar amount, which is one of the reasons. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ritter.
Just one other thing, with the price of housing has come down, so I think that also we can help more people that are getting it, especially the repos and bank owns, some of them are in bad shape. So, it allows new, first-time homeowners to get into a house and be able to fix it up a little bit if they can take advantage of that loan.
Absolutely.
So, I wanted to say that.
Thank you. So, you're saying that $40,000 is available to purchase a mobile home, or what do you call them, trailers? Is that correct?
We actually have a sister program to this that addresses purchasing. This is focused specifically on rehabilitation of an existing home that someone might own.
Yes, so, so your sister one is $40,000?
It is $40,000, isn't it?
It's actually up to 60 this year with moderate income program.
Who decides on the amount? Council?
No. This is governed by California redevelopment law.
So, they're the ones who give you the information, what they'd like to see? What I see is that, at times, that in that program, that it would seem like you, since trailers are less money, that possibly you could give less money, but to more, more folks in the community, instead of a higher amount like that, and help a lot more people. And would that work?
Certainly, we're looking all the time to try to maximize the use of the limited funds that we have. That's certainly something that we consider as we move forward, and we want to try to leverage the funds that we have as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell.
If you'd like, I'll make a motion for approval.
Go ahead. Okay.
Second.
Okay. Please cast your vote. Passes with Mayor Vance absent. Thank you. Our next one is C-23. And...
Would you like a report first? And then listen to speakers?
Counsel, would you like a report first or listen to the speaker? Speaker first.
Speakers first.
Okay. First gentleman is Michael Booth. Please state your name.
Dr. Michael Booth, 1030 Oak Drive. The reason I'm wanting to speak on number 23, the retirement of the debt and the re-loning to the CDC of 5.5 million, basically. The loan that is to be repaid, according to the... The loan that is to be repaid, according to the agenda report, is the hacienda, or hacienda I believe it's referred to. That pays the city an annual interest by the terms of the loan, which I estimate to be approximately $220,000. So I find it difficult to understand how the report can say that there's no impact on the general fund when there's actually a loss of revenue projected for, of $220,000 a year. That $220,000 a year has been amounted to $2 million since the beginning of the loan back in, I believe, 2000, or back in 1997. So it's a significant amount of money coming back to the general fund. The terms of the, of the new loan that the city is providing to the CDC is also, I don't know how to describe it. You're retiring the loan that apparently is probably in the neighborhood of 5.5% plus the balance of the amount beyond that hacienda loan is probably, you'll probably retire the seven, there's one that I believe 7% for the adobe. That's being replaced by a loan that where the terms, as far as I can figure, the terms are based on a two-year maturity, which amounts to a 1.8% payable on, at the end of the loan. That's a 30-year loan at 1.8%. It might adjust annually, but you're basically providing the CDC with a 30-year loan at 1.8% below the rate of inflation, so they can buy land and maybe build, maybe not, for who knows when. If they delay from mismanagement, the taxpayer's going to foot the bill for the 1.8% interest on the loan. $5.5 million is going to the CDC. Why the sweetheart deal? All the other loans apparently are 4%, 5%. The current 30-year, the same instrument, is over 4% today. I don't understand why the terms are so generous to the CDC, except that maybe they don't, they're either being mismanaged, or they don't have any money, and the taxpayer is expected to foot the bill. I object to that kind of loan. That's ridiculous terms.
Thank you. Your light went on. Thank you. Chuck Rabel, please.
Good evening once again. Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent. I'm the one guy that, over the last eight years, have been, talked about these loans from the general fund to redevelopment. And yes, it is $20 million, and yes, come December, okay, when you're required as a commission to put out your annual report, we'll find out exactly where this money was as of this past June. The way things work is never do anything before you absolutely have to do it. I asked when we were talking about the expansion of the redevelopment, let's get it all on the table at one time, so the public knows. We chose not to do that. So a year from December, we'll know about these, the financial situation today of redevelopment. That's the way things work. Keep in mind that as recent as June, there's a loan to redevelopment from the general fund, $281,000, to clear title on a small, small partial of the development block downtown. It's unique, I'll tell you that. And it's creative, no question about that. And it'll get approved, there's no question in my mind about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mr. Rawlings.
Yes, Mayor Protem, counsel, Bill Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment and Housing. Mr. Zinner has a very brief presentation. No?
Do you want a presentation, or do you want to just address the questions?
Just address the questions.
Address the questions, please.
Lot of questions. The issue of how the loans are structured, there are actually several outstanding loans to the city, all of which follow the format that's being proposed tonight, which is tying the loan to the two-year cost of funds. The loan that we're proposing to be retired tonight would be the exception to that, and which is why we're moving forward to recommend that that loan be retired. The purpose of going forward with this is to create debt at no cost to the general fund for the purposes of using tax increment to repay the debt. It's a complicated, in my opinion, sometimes convoluted way that California redevelopment law is set up, but we have to use the tax increment to pay debt. We can't make a direct payment. So the purpose of our proposal tonight is to do two things, is to retire one debt that the CDC owes to the city, but also at like amount to create new debt that would allow us then to use the funds that we have to move forward with various projects.
Any questions? Counsel, Mr. Campbell.
Why don't you cover the reason for the difference in the spread of the interest rate, and what that reflects? The 1.8% which I, I'm on the Investment Advisory Committee, pretty much reflects many of the investments we have today. But I'm not sure that's clear to the public.
There are a lot of things that go into how interest rates are set, of course, and part of the issue is longer-term debt is both more secure and more risky, depending on how you look at it. And so if you have an interest rate that's locked in for a long period of time, that could be good if interest rates go lower, and it could be bad if interest rates go higher. By going with the two-year effectively-floating rate, it allows both the CDC and the city to be in the position of taking advantage of the changes in the market, and so, so I would argue is fairer, and reduces risk to both the city and the CDC equally.
As you develop, like our downtown, the increment money, then that increment money could actually be, is used to do the expansion, could that immediately be used to do, to work in the expansion that we just had?
The tax increment funds can be used to repay debt. And so, exactly, and so we have to create that debt in order to use those funds to pay it back. So while it is somewhat convoluted, the idea is that you would be able to use the debt to move the projects many, that we've talked about and that are the priorities of the council forward, and then we'd use the tax increment to repay that debt over time. That doesn't mean that the debt would necessarily go out 20 or 30 years. Of course, as we see tonight, we're recommending that we pay off a loan that has not reached its full maturity. So there is a possibility in the out-years that you'd be able to repay the debt sooner.
Thank you. Counsel? Any more questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion on the item then.
Okay. Mr. Gronky made the motion on that. Okay, and Ms. Ritter, the second. Does the, one who made the motion have three dollars? No? Okay. Okay, thank, okay, go ahead. Passes with Mr. Vance absent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Rawlings, Jeff?
We have only one item on the discussion, and that's D-1, and that's on land acquisition, purchase of 150 Broadway in downtown Vista.
Mr. Ham?
Mr. Ham, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. I'm Kevin Ham, Director of Economic Development, and we have Mr. Bill Rawlings, the Director of Redevelopment and Housing. The Community Development Commission is responsible for implementation of the redevelopment plan for the Vista redevelopment project area. The plan affects and controls development and use of all real property located within the project area, and authorizes the commission to purchase and/or lease property within the project area. One of the goals of the commission is to assist with the revitalization of the historic downtown. To assist with the implementation of this goal, staff has negotiated a land purchase to ensure that we have control of a critical piece of property within the historic downtown. Recently, the property at 150 Broadway was listed for sale on the open market at $750,000. This property is located at the corner of Broadway and Haynes Place, and is currently occupied by the owner. Staff is recommending that the commission authorize the purchase of 150 Broadway with the intention of utilizing the property for future development. Prior to utilizing the property for future development, the city will evaluate leasing the property in the interim period so as to offset the costs associated with the acquisition of the site. Discussions with the owner of 150 Broadway have resulted in a negotiated purchase price of $686,000, which is consistent with a third-party independent appraisal. The total cost to acquire the property is $696,000, which includes the sale price of $686,000, plus an estimated escrow cost of approximately $10,000. Funds are available from the fund balance and the redevelopment revolving fund account, and the land will be purchased and held in the land held-for-resale account. Staff recommends adopting the attached resolution authorizing the chairman to execute an acquisition agreement with the Vitovich Trust for the purchase of the property located at 150 Broadway, and authorize the executive director to execute escrow instructions, deeds, leases, and other documents and actions required to complete the purchase. This concludes our report, and Mr. Rawlings and I are here available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on this item, Chuck Rabel.
Good evening again, Mr. Acting Chairman and Commissioners. This is the Community Planning Commission. Heck, I object to everything, but in particular, if you go to page two of your report, it says fiscal impact. Okay, now what we're doing is we're taking this property off the tax rolls. City's going to own it. They're not going to pay property tax on it, and the fiscal impact should reflect that. The school district's not going to get the tax money that they're used to getting off of this. And yes, I've been lectured by the former city attorney and by others about how I don't understand redevelopment, and yes, it doesn't have to do it, but it would be nice, it'd be nice to be, to have a little more, what's the term, accounting integrity, maybe? That yes, there is this bank account someplace that we're never going to get money from, but that's where we're going to put the money that we should have gotten had the city not purchased this property and it would still be on the tax rolls. To establish the, the actual, come closer to establishing the real cost of redevelopment. How much money would the city have, and the school district have gained with Sycamore Creek over the years had it, had it stayed on the tax rolls? Just a thought. Again, there is fiscal impact, it's not mentioned in the report, and at least a lip service ought to be given to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Ms. Ritter, please.
We just get a small portion of that tax money in the property tax rolls, and I'm hoping that we can develop a parking structure there one day that will help our downtown and make our downtown more successful, which will bring in more sales tax, which will make us money in the long run. So I'm willing to trade off and look toward the future for that, and hopefully that we can build our parking structure one day for the downtown. Because I know that as soon as we build on the lot that's kind of on Indiana and Vista Village and Main Street there, as soon as we build there, that's going to take away a lot of the parking in the downtown. People use that as overflow parking, and I know that at some point, we're going to need a structure. So I'm, I'm all for this so that someday we can do that, and I hope not too far in the distance.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Mr. Gronky.
Yeah, two questions. First of all, I know there's a lot of discussion about the city owning properties, including commercial properties, and then leasing it back, or renting them out. Is there an opportunity here if we were to purchase this property, which is an existing building? Could we lease it out to, or rent it out to a company until the time it's utilized?
Yes, we will, as part of our due diligence and evaluation, we'll look at any property that we acquire. We always look at the viability for renting it out to generate interim income. Sometimes that's not possible because of the state of the property, and in some cases, it may cost more money to bring it up to code than it is to not do so. But that's part of our routine approach to all properties that would be acquired.
So whenever we acquire a piece of commercial property like this, then since we are new owners of the property, we are required to meet ADA standards that are now in place that weren't in place when that property was initially constructed?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's quite a bit of cost sometimes in converting it over?
There can be.
Okay. And the second thing I have is, just in the cost of it in general, I realize, and I don't mean to be mean-spirited about this, but the prices of residential properties haven't stabilized yet, and I'm not quite sure about the commercial properties, but are we still seeing a declining, in the prices of these, of these commercial properties, and is there a better opportunity in the future if we wait on it?
My opinion would be that there is some continuing softening of the commercial market as well. However, when we look, in a perfect world, we would time our new project with the willingness of a buyer to sell a piece of property, exactly. In the real world, though, it's very difficult to do that, and so we try to take advantage of properties that come available for sale. And in this particular case, it's available for sale if we've reached an agreement. It's possible that if we were to wait, that the price would be lower. It's also possible that the property would not be available for purchase. And so balancing those two items together, we try to reach an agreement on a fair price at the time that we're in a position to act, and that's where we are today.
Okay, I guess I just want to share concern that we do have some vacant buildings in the downtown area, and I'd hate to see the city being the owner of one of those buildings. So I hope our project moves in the most expedient manner.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Gronky. Ms. Ritter.
Even though if we buy the building, even though we don't make any upgrades, like if, I know if a person out there buys a building, and they don't make any upgrades, and they don't have to bring it up to code until they start making improvements and get a building permit or whatever. So if we didn't bring this building, if we just bought the building and rented it like it is, or maybe to the clients that are in there, would we still have to, would we still have to bring it up to code because we're a city?
It may be possible that there is an exception. My concern would be that we would want to make sure that the building is safe, and that we meet all standards for that, and so it really takes a full evaluation of the building to be able to answer your question specifically.
Well, safe is one thing, but like, there's no, I know there's no elevator, it's a two-story, so I just was wondering how, you know, how much you have to bring it up to code as a city, and if, you know, if it could just be leased out as it is, if it's just, you know, if we don't do anything to it, you know, I mean, if it's still safe, I, you know, we have to go up to ADA standards, I wonder if we could do that?
We would, we would hold the city to the same standard that we hold everyone else as far as meeting the code. We'd have to go through that line by line.
Okay, and then just, and then just to answer Mr. Gronky's question, I found in commercial real estate, because I have a few pieces that I work with neighborhood real estate, that it's pretty stable. It's a softer market, but it hasn't done like residential, dropped so far. It's just pretty much a flat market. It just hasn't gone up, but it hasn't gone down a whole lot either, so I just wanted to do that. So I just wanted to ask that.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
One of the questions I have is, in a negotiated sale or purchase, what requirements are there for relocation, if any?
In this particular case, and I would defer, of course, to the city attorney, in this particular case, there would be no relocation because it is a negotiated sale, and the owner is the occupant.
So if we went through some other form of acquisition, it could be rather expensive to do the relocation?
Without a doubt, if we went through another form of acquisition, it would be significantly more expensive.
Okay, and then, Mrs. Gelder, could you remind me, please, what share of And then Mrs. Gilder, could you remind me, please, what share of sales or property tax we get? I thought it was 14%. The balance goes to the county.
About 14 and 1/2 cents on every dollar property tax that is paid.
So that would be in response to Mr. Rabel's question about what other costs they're possibly incurring here. It's fairly nominal.
Correct, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We have a demonstration block that we're working on now with the developer, and on that demonstration block, there used to be quite a few buildings there that were, to my beliefs, they were in okay shape. That's before any of you came around. And I felt at that time that the, and that, we probably owned that demonstration block for how many years? 20 years?
Before I arrived, so probably about 20 years, I think.
20 years. In that 20-year time, I feel, and I've always felt this, that if we would have left those buildings there and collected rent, then the rent money there goes to the redevelopment agency, and that redevelopment agency then could pay down our notes. But we would be receiving rent every month from those buildings. And, but no, we chose then to, I guess, knock them down, and we left an empty building, empty, just a lot. Now, today, we have this in front of us. I hope that we do not knock this building down. We lease the building out, receive money until the day that we're ready to put up a parking structure in that particular piece of property. If you receive $1,000 a month for that property, it's better than zero. So let's really look at that to me, that we do not, we make the effort to keep that building up as long as we can. Now, that particular building is needed, that the property is needed, that we're hoping that down the road, when we develop the demonstration block, that that will be a three- or four-story building, we will need parking in that area. And this has been a very strong priority for me, has been the parking structure in that area and the, when I go to the VBA meetings, there's, and that's a very strong message that they've given me for the future parking. The downtown area really can't develop at this point without additional parking. We don't necessarily need the parking today, but this is good planning on the city's part to purchase today, and down the road, we can eventually have a parking structure. But I'm going to tell you that what I feel about a parking structure is that I don't like parking structures that look like parking structures. I like parking structures that look like, have a facade around the outside and look like a building, so that way, when you go by, you will not look at a parking structure, you'll look at a building, something that looks like a building. And hopefully, we'll be able to figure out some kind of program so that it will pay for itself down the road, and this is just the beginning here. Now's the time to buy the property. Vitovich is the gentleman that wants to get rid of it, and we need to buy it. So, thank you. Could I have a motion or any more discussion?
Without any discussion, I'll go and make a motion on this item.
I'll second that.
Okay. Please cast your vote. Passes with Mayor Vance absent. Thank you. Our next item, thank you, gentlemen. Well, you're moving up here fast, John. We'll now proceed to the public hearing, and we have only one item on the public hearing, an extension of a bargain basement store moratorium. And Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Some background on this item. In October of last year, the council adopted a 45-day urgency ordinance that established the moratorium on bargain basement stores, as well as an urgency ordinance that established a licensing requirement for stores to establish within the redevelopment area. In November of last year, we extended the moratorium for one year, which will expire on October 29th of this year. The definition of bargain basement stores is essentially a for-profit or nonprofit business where the majority of merchandise items sold in the store are at or below $5, or a majority of merchandise items sold in the store are used items. It excludes antique and consignment stores, used bookstores, collectibles, and food and beverage stores. The requested action this evening is to extend the ordinance for one additional year to allow for a review of land uses that staff feels require some additional regulation. This would extend the moratorium to October 29th of 2009 and provide staff the time they need to bring forward a code amendment. There is still a licensing requirement that was adopted last year that will still apply within the redevelopment area regardless of the timeframe of the moratorium. This slide shows the current redevelopment project area in blue and the expanded area that was approved in September in yellow. The moratorium will only apply to the existing redevelopment area or the blue areas. The yellow areas don't have the moratorium applied because it was not in effect at the time that the original urgency ordinance was adopted. However, the licensing requirement that we adopted last year that requires approval of any new uses by the Director of Finance that must show that the use meets the goals of the redevelopment area will apply within the expanded area, so the city still has some discretion in the establishment of those types of uses within the expanded project The action this evening that is requested is approval of the moratorium extension for one year so that staff can introduce a zoning code amendment in early next year that would define a range of land uses for additional use restrictions. And that completes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? No? Oh, there is a speaker? Oh, there is a speaker here, Chuck Rabel. Well, I'm glad somebody comes up and speaks.
Yes, me again.
It's all right.
Public hearing, as a matter of, of course, somebody from the public should be heard, one would think. In this case, I've got no problem extending this moratorium. My problem is ad hoc, the way we went about it, okay? And as we did with Ari De Jong and the change to the commercial uses, it's time to get that general plan update finished, and it's time that let's get some of those elements of that general plan moving through this, through the process. The ad hoc approach to, the way we do business, it's time for it to end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Rita?
I was going to say, Mr. Conley, could you provide the council with an update on how those elements are going to be working through the system and when they would be seeing them?
Sure. The general plan update process is ongoing. As you all know, we've had a series of community meetings that started. We expect to have a number of additional meetings through the end of this year and probably into the beginning of next year to address land use, community identity, circulation, open space and conservation, and we'll be having focused community meetings for all of those topics coming up, starting at the end of this month. We expect to have a draft general plan and all of the applicable elements by early summer, late spring of 2009, and then we'll have to do an environmental impact report, which should take about another year, so that the final general plan document should be completed around the beginning to middle of 2010. But in response to Mr. Rabel's comment, the general plan won't necessarily address specific land use issues. That's a zoning code responsibility. And so in response to the community desire to regulate some of the more undesirable uses, such as those addressed by this moratorium, we expect to bring back a zoning code amendment in spring of next year that'll define those uses and either impose additional land use restrictions or restrict them altogether. The general plan doesn't get to that level of detail. That's, as I said, a zoning code issue.
Thank you. Mr. Gronky, go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I know the moratorium's in place, but when it comes to control of properties, let's take the Vaughn Center, which we just put into our redevelopment area, and there was a 99-cent store that was since closed down. Is there an opportunity for one to reopen under this particular moratorium?
The Vaughn Center, I believe the subject property that you're speaking of is within the new expanded redevelopment project area. It's not in the original area. So that new discount store type use that were to go in that location would be subject to the licensing requirement that I mentioned in my presentation. That basically requires that a business intending to locate there would have to submit an application that explains all of the types of merchandise, et cetera, that are sold and if there's any criminal history of the owner of the facility. And that application is submitted to the Director of Finance, and he reviews it for consistency with all of the redevelopment area objectives and goals, and has to make a determination that the establishment of that type of a business at that location would assist the redevelopment agency in reaching their goals. And if he can't make that determination, then the license is denied. So as I said before, the city still has some discretion in the review of those types of uses in the expanded project area, and that's the process they would have to go through if they wanted to go in that location.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gronky. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. Mr. Conley, just clarify for me, on your map here, you have yellow and blue, and you're saying the moratorium extends just to the blue at this time. Will your amended ordinance also include then the yellow or the green, the yellow?
You're speaking to the zoning code amendment that we expect to bring next year. Yes, it will actually, we'll have discretion to apply it wherever we want. If we want to just apply it to the redevelopment area, it will apply to all of the new and old redevelopment area. Or if we want to apply it citywide, we have the option of doing that as well.
And when do you think you'll bring that forward?
I'm expecting that to come forward in February or March of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Ritter? Nothing? Okay. I feel that, yes, this was an emergency, and, but I don't like bringing this up at the 11th hour, items like this at the 11th hour. But we did what we did, and we are working on it, and in a couple of years, we'll have this all settled, and we'll be able to go forward. So with that, would like to have a motion, please?
Close the public hearing and adopt this item.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ritter? Okay. Passes with Mayor Vance absent. Thank you. That concludes our items on the agenda, and we'll start today with our city attorney. Any remarks?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Gilder?
No, I don't have any items particularly to talk about. The state keeps wrangling with the budget and saying that they're going to be bringing it back and opening it back up again, which is kind of interesting. So we'll see what they do there. We have one more council, a full council meeting on October 28th before the election, and we might have a workshop item on Election Day on November 4th unless you tell me not to.
Okay. Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this Saturday, going to Boys and Girls Club. They're having an Oktoberfest. They'll have a German band there and everything, sauerkraut and knacker, so I guess it's going to be a nice festival, and I hope everybody will attend and support our Boys and Girls Club.
Ms. Ritter?
I don't have anything to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. And Mr. Campbell?
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank Mr. Ham for his coordination with our firm called Solotube. I think it's important the community know that Solotube has grown into 100,000 square foot space that they need to expand. Mr. Ham is working with him on that, but today was a very, very important day for that company. They've signed an agreement with the China Environmental Energy Conservation Investment Corporation, which is a government-owned corporation, who saw their product in the wrestling pavilion at the Olympics where these, light was coming in through the roof. And China has apparently a very active program to reduce energy use, because that's a critical issue for that country as it grows. And the company that they're working with is, I think, most impressive by both its scale and its accomplishments in a very difficult environment. And the products will be shipped here from the United States to China, which I think is an absolutely marvelous thing for the balance of payments. And I think it opens up more opportunities, and this company already is selling in every other continent but has not reached yet China, and now they've done so. It was a very, very nice event today, and I kudos to Mr. Ham for his work on this.
Yes, it was a great event there today. I was there also, and amazing how global things are happening in our world, and I was very impressed. Now, I'd also like to thank the last students that hung out here for the last, to the end. Thank you for staying. I hope you enjoyed it. And I am Mayor Protem for the City of Vista here this year, and I've had the opportunity to be here twice in my year, and I've enjoyed it, and it will be my last meeting at this, and hopefully that after November, I will be back, and maybe in that four-year period, I will be able to do it again. But I have enjoyed it, and I want to thank Ms. Gilder for helping me along with this. She was very helpful here, and I'd also like to thank our council for helping me out on this, and really enjoy it, enjoyed it, and thank you very much. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did it before 7:00.